Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, March 13, 2017, to order. All members of this board are present. At this time, I'd kindly ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the right of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Thank you. As you saw, the first thing that we did this evening is we did our annual report photo. And at this time, we are running a few minutes late. I do apologize. The next appointment on our agenda is a public hearing. It is with reference to the acceptance of streets at town meeting, specifically Cheyenne Drive. And I'm going to turn it over to the town manager at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, you'll recall your last meeting on February 27th. There was a memorandum from Paul Aluny, who is the town engineer. He noted, "The engineering division has performed a final inspection of the roadway referred to as Cheyenne Drive. As of this date, the roadway has been completed in accordance with approved definitive subdivision design plans. After review of the documentation and having performed final inspection, I recommend to the Wilmington Board of Selectmen that said way referred to as Cheyenne Drive be laid out as a public way. Please find enclosed a Mylar Street acceptance plan for your consideration to endorse after a public hearing scheduled on March 13, 2017." Town is currently holding a 10 percent, $13,736 bond, which will be held by the town for 18 months from substantial completion or until the street is accepted by the town. This street is slated to go before the town meeting if the board so chooses. So this evening is a public hearing for the board to entertain any feedback, comments from the public, and then the board would be asked to take a vote to authorize that this street be considered for approval as a public way at town meeting.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Before I turn it over to the public, and when I turn it over to my fellow board members, any questions or comments at all at this time? Hearing none? Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this matter? Okay. Seeing none. Would anyone on this board like to make a motion to approve this request as presented?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Bendel, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Just as a note on that, Madam Chair, so there will be a Mylar plan for the board that you can perhaps sign after the meeting.
Sure. So as some of you may have noticed, I did go a little bit out of order, just to keep the seven o'clock, as it was a public hearing. The next item on our agenda for the Sonic request, that is going to be postponed for this meeting, so it will be taken off the agenda. At this time, I'd like to revert back to item number two on the agenda, which is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants 35, 35A, 36, and 36A. Questions, comments, or a motion, please.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Bendel, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We do not have any meeting minutes to approve. We are running a few minutes early. This is not a public hearing, and I do see that we do have Ms. Valerie Gingrich here in the audience, who is our Director of Planning and Conservation. I would kindly ask Valerie to come forward, and we'll take up the sale of the Butters Farm. And good evening, Valerie. Take your time to get settled, and when you're ready, I'll feel free to present accordingly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the finalized paperwork for the preservation and sale of Butters Farm property. There's three documents before you tonight to consider. The first being a deed conveying the property to Mr. David Shugru. The second is a preservation restriction agreement with Historic New England. They'll hold the new preservation restriction. And in conjunction with that, the third document is a stewardship contribution agreement with Historic New England, where the town contributes a one-time monetary amount to Historic New England for the perpetual monitoring of the preservation restriction. So those three documents are before you tonight to consider. And going forward, the board would sign those documents. Historic New England would sign the documents. The final preservation restriction is then signed by Mass Historic. And after that, a closing is set, and the deed and the preservation restriction would be recorded together. So that's sort of the process moving forward. And I can answer any questions about process moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, I'll turn it over to fellow board members. Does anyone have any questions or anything that you'd like to share, questions in terms of the future of this building and how it pertains to the town? I'll start with you, Mr. Shampoo.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Valerie. To me, this is great news. It's really, I think, the best of all worlds for both Mr. Shugru, as well as the town, and as well as the building. I think there was a number of folks that were and have been passionate about that building and its maintenance and its preservation, so this, I think, serves that need. The question I guess I have for Valerie, and you've talked about you're prepared to answer questions about process, so I might, I'm not trying to trick you up here, but can you characterize in summary nature what the preservation restrictions restrict, as it were? Like, in other words, what are the limitations that the new owners will have to live under in order to keep that building in compliance?
Sure. So I won't get into great detail, but it has to do with the appearance of the exterior, what kind of materials you can use. So that'll be sort of a dialogue with Historic New England. Considering the condition of the home at this point, a lot of the interior is going to be replaced. There's a lot of structural elements that need to be installed. And actually, they're going to be, there's going to be a preservation, so a lot of times preservation restrictions sort of restrict what you can do, but they're actually going to be doing a rehab agreement, where they're going to agree to what kind of materials are going to be used to rehab the structure. So it's less of what you typically see as a, what you're not allowed to do, and more of what he's going to do to restore the structure as well. So there'll be some changes, and Historic New England's aware of the condition currently, of course, so there's going to need to be some work done to the structure. But, you know, they'll talk about things like materials for the exterior, the roofing type of materials, and some of those things are explicitly laid out in the preservation restriction itself.
So if I may, thank you. Ongoing, so once the sort of the big portion of any construction or refurbishment work that happens, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, if there's minor upgrades or updates that the owner wants to put into the kitchen, the bathroom, windows, whatever, there's a process that that owner must follow in order to get approval for the materials and the look and feel of those materials?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll go through Historic New England to make those changes, unless they're exempt for some reason.
Okay.
And I think there are things that wouldn't necessarily go through their process.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything over here?
I'll do that, Madam Chair. It's all cut and dry. Thank you.
Anything to my right?
That's all been said.
Okay. I just want to say thank you very much to you for all of your work and working with the buyer and just working through the whole process and making sure that the historical piece is upheld and, you know, for the foreseeable future. I think that this is a benefit for the town to see it go over to the care, custody, and control of a buyer that's willing and able to take this on and certainly has roots in Wilmington. So I'm happy to see someone who has some historical roots to Wilmington end up with the property and seems pretty excited. I did have an opportunity to talk to him casually, so that's a good thing. I wanted to also commend the Historical Commission for their efforts in working with the structure. It's been an ongoing item for the town that a lot of people have worked on, and I just appreciate you and your team seeing this through, such that this building can be preserved in some capacity and be the landmark that it is in town, and will have a bright future here with someone that will care for it the way it should be. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for your time.
Okay.
So we're going to take this up under Board to Consider, if that's okay with you?
Great.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
So, moving on, we are still running ahead of schedule, but I do see that we have our esteemed Chief of Police, Michael Begonis, in the audience. And if I could kindly ask the chief to come forward, and we are going to discuss pending immigration legislation. And just to give a backdrop to people that are here in the audience and those that may be listening at home, it became a subject matter topic that a fellow member of the board did bring up to discuss a bill from Massachusetts that was, you know, pending, and asked for this board to consider taking some action. And we, as a board, collectively asked for some opinion. It wasn't a unanimous vote, but a majority of this board asked to seek an opinion of our legislative delegation across the board at the state and federal level, to the extent that they were willing to comment. And so the last piece was also to get some information from our police chief, and Chief Begonis is here to share some information with us. So welcome and good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. It's nice to be given the time before the board with such a, I guess, a line-drive softball that I can head out of the park, right out of the chute, and make everybody happy, so. I guess at the beginning, kind of a question is what exactly the board's looking for from me tonight?
To help characterize it, you know, we, for some of us, and I'm speaking for myself, the concept of sanctuary state versus not being a sanctuary state, how it impacts Wilmington 01887, and just not being close to where the bill is being drafted and being discussed, and just understanding how deciding to weigh in on this or not weigh in on this may impact the daily lives of people in Wilmington. And quite frankly, I'm not close enough to this on a day-to-day basis to know what you and your fellow officers encounter every day, that where, with this legislation, for example, in your opinion, as a professional who's been in your profession for a number of years, do you think that this bill is advantageous to the town of Wilmington, to the state of Massachusetts, or not? And maybe it's too early to tell, but from my standpoint, if I were to go and take a vote or a position on something respectfully stated, I would want to do my due diligence and understand the full magnitude of the bill and how it's relating to day-to-day life locally and statewide. Does that make sense?
Sure. Sure. I guess to start with an overview of what immigration law, how it impacts the Wilmington Police Department, to the greatest extent, it really doesn't. We do not categorically go knocking door to door or ask people for their papers for proof of citizenship. We never have. It's not within the purview of what we do. We do not take action on civil detainees for the purpose of just looking for people that are beyond their immigration status or have some issues with their filings. We do participate kind of indirectly with the immigration process through criminal activity. So, you know, and our focus, we believe, should always be on apprehending violent criminals and felons through that process. So when somebody's arrested and they're brought to the police department, they're typically fingerprinted by statute. By statute, those fingerprints go to the state police, and then the state police transfer that data to the FBI. And the FBI, by law, transfers that to the Department of Homeland Security and through that the immigration process. So what we would get, and it's not often that it happens, is a piece of paper that comes back and states that there's a detainer for that individual for some other reason. So what we would do is the process would be, everybody's offered bail at some point or an opportunity for bail. We would call the magistrate, and a magistrate would come before the police department, review the file, and typically see that detainer and most oftenly not opt to bail them. They'd hold them on personal, which is not a choice or a decision the police department makes. At the next day, they'd be brought to court, and at the court, after the proceedings were finished and that person was either released on personal or some bail was set, if ICE or another federal agency wanted them, they would pick them up at that point, but it would not be a direct handoff to them. So, you know, that's kind of the overview of what we do in the police department. It's not like we're out pursuing that avenue. It's something that comes through the process of the paperwork that we do. So I had an opportunity to speak with several chiefs that are from sanctuary cities, and I guess the overall consensus is that, in a lot of ways, a sanctuary city is kind of a feel-good designation at the end of the day, because you can be a sanctuary city, but that doesn't mean that ICE is not going to come into the city, perform detainees, and take action, both on the civil and criminal side. So I don't know what you would call a sanctuary city, so, in that situation. The difficulty that some of these chiefs have, and we don't have the similar experience, but you don't have a high, I guess, percentage of immigrants in Wilmington that are from, you know, recently entered into the country, and a lot of folks that might have issues with their status here. In those other communities, their experiences that they feel that the communication coming forward on crime reporting might be stalled because the individual who does not have the proper status in the country may not want to discuss that with the police for fear of being deported. And that's certainly real. That can certainly happen in a lot of situations, so. Right now, it's in a state of flux. Obviously, you see, it's a very, it's a pejorative content. People are very emotional about it on either side. It is being battled out in the courts currently. The president has issued a couple of different presidential orders, directives, that explain what, I guess, his administration is looking for. At the end of the day, there's a couple ways that the police department can get involved with the, you know, the day-to-day process of immigration enforcement, and that's by entering into a 287G agreement, which is not something that the police department has done nor is interested in doing at this point. We have a lot of work to take care of, what we have to take care of here than to focus on other federal laws. That said, if something comes across our desk, we're not going to just categorically ignore it. We're not pursuing it. We're not looking for it, but if it's brought to our attention, we'll address it as it sees fit through that process, on the criminal side, not necessarily the civil side. So the SJC has actually taken up a case. It's the Lund case, because there's all kinds of issues with some of these detainees that come out, and question as to statutorily how that works in the state of Massachusetts and whether you can actually enforce them or not enforce them. For the watered-down version, sometimes detainees are written by an individual agent in ICE, and they'll send that off. So it's not a warrant, so to speak, and it's not established off of a probable cause that was established by an impartial magistrate. So, you know, we have some serious concerns with some of those other issues. Previous criminal record, those other things, those deportation orders, things like that, are different for criminal acts, and that's what we would look at. So I guess at the outset, the police department's primary objective is to provide safety and welfare to everyone, regardless of their status within the country, okay? We also want to provide equal enforcement of all the laws, and that's kind of the difficulty they have with immigration, because some folks feel that, well, if you're here illegally, you're committing a crime, and vice versa. So, you know, when you set one group aside, there's a whole bunch of literature on that, and the complaints are that when you say you give a special individual group dispensation to violate the law, setting a whole group of people on the other side that are following the law, it's not my opinion, that's the dialogue that's out there. So it certainly dusts things up, and I think that you can see the complexity in that, because basically Congress hasn't been able to figure it out, period, in, you know, I'm just a humble police chief, and I come nowhere close to completely understanding the dynamics of this. So equal enforcement of the law, we want equal access to public service and safety. I mean, I think that it doesn't matter where you're from or what your status is here. If you've been a victim of a crime, you should be able to come forward. We should be able to do what we can to help you and bring those people to justice. Partnerships across the board. So you have partnerships with the local community, you have partnerships with federal agencies, and that is just a normal ebb and flow of being a law enforcement officer in today's day and age. It's natural. We want people to cooperate with us. At the same time, we want to cooperate with our law enforcement partners. One of the things that I think a lot of people don't look at is, obviously, these are, you know, we don't experience the MS-13 gang issues that some other cities would have in the town of Wilmington, that so when ICE officials are coming into communities to take action on violent criminals, obviously, as a local police department, I would expect you would want to support them somehow to make sure that they're safe, that their process goes safely, and that nobody gets hurt on either side of that agenda. So I apologize for not having a lot to offer you on this, and I would certainly probably steer away from giving you my advice on what to do, only because I think that there's so much we don't know that we don't know in the process, that it's really something that, you know, you have to sit down and do a lot of research on. I don't think it's something that can be a decision that you should be able to make with me talking to you for five or 10 minutes. It's that complex.
I appreciate you saying that. I think it was, from my standpoint as a sitting member of this board and happened to be chair at this current time, is that I felt that I did not want to take a vote, and I'm not speaking unanimously for this board, but for myself as a sitting member, that I did not feel that it would be appropriate for me to take action on this without consulting your professional opinion and that of your department, and wanted to know that, does this bill impact your ability to keep our streets and homes and people and residents and anyone that comes into this community for whatever reason, safe? And if I may be so forward as to say, it doesn't sound like this bill will change your ability to do business on behalf of the town as it stands right now.
As it stands right now, doesn't make a substantial impact. I think that the difficulty in is the sanctuary city aspect of that. What does that really mean?
I understand. And I would even also say that there's a major political component that is overlaid on top of this, depending on where you sit. And from my standpoint, and I'm going to refrain from speaking further and give my fellow board members an opportunity to speak, but when I look at this, I want to be supportive of what I'm elected to do, which is to support the residents of Wilmington by also being one of the 351 cities and towns that understand that we are part of our state of Massachusetts. So I feel inclined to take no specific action on this, and it doesn't mean that I'm opposed to the bill or not opposed to the bill, but as a courtesy to my fellow selectman, Selectman McCoy, I agreed to put this on an agenda at a said time, which happens to be tonight, and respectfully stated, you are the final piece to the puzzle. We had received correspondence from our state delegation in even above that, and at this time, you know, I will turn it over to my fellow board members. I'll start. Actually, you know, as a courtesy to you, Selectman McCoy, if I may, I'll give you the floor, as this was your idea.
I appreciate it, Madam Chair. Everything the chair said is absolutely accurate, but I'm the selectman who brought this up originally. I read an article in the Lowell Sun, I read an editorial, and it really kind of hit me that Senator Eldredge wanted to propose legislation before the State House, basically making the 351 cities and towns a safe haven for illegal immigrants. And, you know, and I'm not an authority on the subject. I even said back then, I don't believe that, and this, when I brought that up, and then after about three, four weeks, it started hitting nationally, not because of this, by any stretch. It's just that it's an issue that's been dealing for a long time. And since then, the bill has been changed, and Eldredge's bill has changed. It's probably going to get changed again and again, you know? So I just brought that up. I mean, I did make a motion. Unfortunately, it failed, but that's fine. I respect it. And I had no problem when we got the letters from our representatives, and I was satisfied. I did. I said I was satisfied at the last meeting. And I just, you know, the chair wanted to have you come in, and I respect her doing that. You know, it's just that it kind of bothered me relative to that, and it just seems out of place. And I understand that some chiefs of police in the cities of Boston are basically listening to the mayor that this is what I want to do and that's it, you know? And I'm not saying that's the case here, and I know we don't see that every day like you see in the inner cities. I just brought that up. What really bothered me was, you know, when you see what happened out in San Francisco, you got these illegal aliens in here. They commit murder, they commit rape, robbery, and for the senator to basically making the whole 351 cities and towns a safe haven is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of. And I was just hoping to try to have a conversation about it. I'm satisfied what's taken place thus far. I appreciate your comments, and your hands are tied to a certain degree, but I appreciate those comments, and I feel good that you do a great job. We have a great police department, and they keep us safe, and that's the most important thing. And like I said, I don't think the president's going to get 20, 30 million illegal aliens out of the country. They have to work it out, and the feds, you're right, they got to get their act together and to really implement that, reinforce that law. But the 2, 3 million that are in here, that commit all the horrible crimes, they need to be out of the country, and unfortunately, they get back again and again, and that's that incident in San Francisco that happened. So I appreciate the floor, Madam Chair, and I'm completely satisfied. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment at this time? Anyone?
I just want to thank the chief for coming in and addressing the issue. And I would just mention that our delegation is opposed to it, and I would agree with that assessment of their opposition to this bill.
Anything, Mr. Bendel?
Chief, thank you for being here, and thanks for helping educate us on this. And I do have one quick question, if I may. Could you just give me an idea, rough estimate, how often, if at all, does the Wilmington Police Department come across someone who's been arrested or placed in custody, found to be an illegal immigrant?
Through our arrest process?
Yes.
It's not often at all. It's on occasion, yeah.
Yeah, and thank you. And so I, too, would be inclined to take no action on this. I mean, I think we have elected members of our state delegation who have indicated that they're all informed on this issue and that they're working on it, and they're opposed to it. And as a volunteer for this board, I think we should spend our time talking about Wilmington issues and things like the opiate crisis and keeping costs low and keeping New England Trail's rail out of here, so I'd like to focus on those issues.
Okay. Thank you. Anything over here, Mr. Shampoo?
Yeah, briefly. I concur with Selectman Bendel. I want to say that I do appreciate Selectman McCoy bringing this to our attention a few weeks ago. Frankly, I hadn't been aware of Representative Eldredge, Senator Eldredge, putting together this bill. I will say that I agree that the bill is very poor. It's poorly written, and it's a tremendous reach, and it ought not be supported. And I'm hopeful that not only our legislative delegation, but the legislators in general at the State House will see fit to squash this. That all being said, I guess I stopped short of, well, I don't want to, like Mr. Bendel said, I feel like I'm put here to keep my eye on the ball as to what's best for the town of Wilmington. And as I look at the chief and I hear that he can, irrespective of the language of the bill, that the chief can continue to offer the support and the security to our population, that's what concerns me the most. If this bill presented the chief a barrier or a challenge or somehow put walls up, so to speak, between your ability to continue to do what it is you do for the town of Wilmington, then I might have some additional, I guess, direction or steps that need to be taken. But at the end of the day, it's in the hands of our legislators. We at the Board of Selectmen level need to be focusing our energies, our efforts, on maintaining budgets and providing services to our community and watching out for snow and all the other things that are happening. So thank you, chief, so much for coming here and for helping s wage any concerns about sort of a larger picture of challenge that you might face.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I just bring up, and I respect the fact Mr. Mendel and Mr. Shampoo talking about town issues, and I did bring it up, even though it's a state issue, but let's call it for what it is. I just asked the town manager, did we receive anything from Senator Tarr? We haven't received how he feels about the bill, number one. Number two, my uncle, Representative Misselli, isn't opposed to it, which I totally agree with him. And with all due respect to our other state representative, he said, I kind of wish you Washington on the issue, but I don't think I'd be inclined to, you know, vote against it, you know? So, you know, we got one rep one way, one senator, we don't know where he stands, and the other rep one way, and that's fine. And I understand we take town issues, but we do receive money from the state. We do a great job in this community, and I didn't think it was, you know, and I appreciate the fact that everybody, we did it well, and I'm satisfied, totally satisfied, but those need to be said, you know? So if there's an issue that comes up, and even though it's not a town issue, but that's something of importance, because that affects our quality of life, when people are murdered, raped, and people get robbed, I think that concerns folks in the town of Wilmington, and we want to prevent that from happening. And we have a great police department that's doing it. And if we can get a message to our legislative delegation, we do it all the time in other matters, you know? So, but I'm happy with what's been said, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If my memory serves me correct, I think Mr. Shampoo brought it up at the last meeting, that he was approached by Senator Tarr at a recent event, and he voiced his opposition to this bill. Is that correct?
Yeah. So unfortunately, he didn't send a letter, and I think he intended to, and we probably ought to, if, I'm certain if you sent him a letter or sent him an email or something, Mr. McCoy, he'd probably convey it in written form. He conveyed it to me in spoken form and asked me to convey that off to my colleagues, that he was in complete opposition to the bill. So we don't have it in written form. You have to just take me on my word that I did speak with Senator Tarr on that. And I, too, share some consternation that our other state representative, Gordon, did indicate that he was generally in opposition to the language of the bill before but could be swayed to be in support of it. I'd be willing to bet with the new language, he's probably in support of it, because I think some of the things that he was opposed to have been changed. So that's just food for thought. I will say something, I'm challenged, Mr. McCoy, and I wasn't going to go here, but I find myself being thrust into it.
Please.
You know, you charact, shit, I don't know if I'm really struggling with whether I want to go here. The characterization that, or the generalization that folks that come here from other countries, whether they come here legally or illegally, are somehow rapists and murderers, and all these other crimes that you referred to, I guess certainly that happens, but that also happens at the hands of citizens. And so people that conduct those crimes, or commit those crimes, are criminals ipso facto, irrespective of their citizenry, or their status as citizens in our country. And that's when the Chief goes into action, and that's when his guys go into action. And like I say, irrespective of whether they're citizens of this country or not, if they commit a crime, then they're to be sought out, and they're to be penalized. And if they're not citizens, they get penalized, and hopefully they get kicked out. But there's a number, I don't know what the numbers are, but I just want to be careful not to paint with a very broad brush. There are good people from other countries that come here. Admittedly, they come here without the proper documentation, and by virtue of that, it could be argued, and is argued by some, that they're committing a crime by coming here illegally. That doesn't make them rapists and murderers, and I just want to be real careful not to paint with that broad brush. I don't endorse the message that people that come here to our country, seeking the American Dream, who maybe are cheating by coming here without the proper documentation, are somehow higher-level criminals. And again, I agreed with you that this legislation is poor. I agreed with you that we should have a conversation and even seek out the opinions of our legislators, but that's where our agreement stops, because I'm shaky on your language, and I didn't want to endorse your language, so I just wanted to go on record with that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And bottom line is, if you did hear what I said, it was 2 to 3 million, those statistics that are given by the federal government, all right? There are 20 million illegal aliens in here, and I think they should have a path to become a citizen. They're here. They should do something, but it's the criminal. That's all I said, it's 2 to 3 million of the criminal that we don't want in this country, and when they do get caught, I would imagine you want them out of here, and unfortunately they come back in again. So obviously, and I'm not taking a federal position, but I'll say it, those illegal aliens that are in here, we really need to do something to make them permanent citizens. I totally understand that. It's just the criminal aspect of it. That's all, and I appreciate everything, and I'm sure we'll be talking about other things relative to the state as budget goes on, if we seek assistance and help. Thank you.
Okay. We good here?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Moving right along. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. So we are continuing to move right along here, and we'll move right into our 8 o'clock appointment. And just for the public knowledge, we're able to move along as quickly as we can, as these are not public hearings, so there's no infraction in terms of moving ahead of schedule. So this has been slated for 8 o'clock, but we're going to move right ahead with it, which is the Board of Selectmen discussion regarding the review of the proposed town meeting warrant. And I'll turn it over to the manager.
Madam Chair, you'll recall that at the meeting on the 27th of February, the draft of the town meeting warrant was presented. I went through each of the articles in terms of the associated costs and the requests for action. This warrant is substantially the same, but I would point out that there are three additions to the warrant, two of which there was a mistaken omission with respect to articles associated with water infrastructure. So first, I'll bring your attention to Article 31, which is now Article 31, found on page five. This is an article seeking to raise and appropriate or borrow funds for the replacement of a water main on Middlesex Avenue. So this, you may recall during my budget presentation, I mentioned a couple of infrastructure projects, one being a replacement of a water main that would run from Glen Road to Federal Street. It would be a 12-inch water main, which is an increase in the size of that water main, and the estimated cost for that is $275,000. The expectation there is that we will borrow for that, and again, that is a, because it's a water infrastructure project, it would be paid through the water rates. The next article, Article 36, is a similar type of article. It's a water main replacement over Ballard Vale or along Ballard Vale Street. You'll recall during my budget presentation, I noted that a section of water main that extends over the overpass at 93 has been out of service now for a period of time because of a failure there. We're looking to replace that water main with, again, a 12-inch water main that would increase the service and increase the flow there. This is being funded in two parts, one through the MWRA, Mass Water Resources Authority, a no-interest loan of $611,000. And the balance would be in the amount of $439,000, and that would be a borrowing that the town, that I would recommend the town pursue. Again, the cost associated with this would be paid through the water rates.
What was the cost again?
So the total cost is $1,500,000, but the breakdown is $611,000 from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, and then $439,000 from the town water rates.
Thank you.
The third article was something that was actually brought to my attention by the town accountant. You'll recall for a number of years now, probably 15 or 20 anyways, the town at, each of the town meetings has sought to establish two different revolving accounts, one for the compost bin program, which allows people to purchase these compost bins. The cost of those bins goes into this account, and then allows us to purchase additional bins. The second revolving account is a Title V septic tank replacement account. There was money many years ago that we obtained through the state that allowed for low-interest loans to homeowners that were unable to otherwise finance the cost of replacing their septic systems. That money that is paid back by those homeowners goes into this account, and then allows us to, in turn, provide funding for additional homeowners that are otherwise unable to finance the replacement of their septic tanks. Those articles have been approved a number of times over the last 15 or 20 years. With the Municipal Modernization Act that the governor signed back in, I believe it was August or thereabouts, there were a number of changes made to municipal law, one of which was a requirement that going forward for the approval of these types of revolving accounts, the town would need to adopt a bylaw. And so you'll see Article 44, which is on page seven, seeks to do that. There was a suggestion or recommendation from the Division of Local Services, which is one of the state agencies recommending that the legislature act to defer this requirement until fiscal 2019, to give municipalities an opportunity to act on this. There has not been any legislation to this point granting any kind of a deferral, so it is my recommendation, and I've been in consultation with town council as well as the town accountant, that this article be added so that it would allow, in the event that the legislature does not take action deferring this requirement, it would allow us to continue to fund those two revolving accounts. So in fact, what you'll see is Article 41 is the article which we have had on the warrant for a number of years that addresses these two revolving accounts, and then Article 42 is the request to adopt this bylaw, which would then put us in conformance with the Municipal Modernization Act. Other than that, the articles, remaining articles are as presented at the last selectmen's So with that, I would just look for the board to take a vote authorizing the warrant, and then to sign it so that the town clerk can post it.
And the amounts given at the last meeting are consistent with the budget?
Yes.
Still the same?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions there, Selectman Shumpin?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Jeff, you did a nice job, unfortunately it wasn't nice enough for my brain, in explaining Article 42. So next year, if 42 passes, would we not have the need for another 41? Am I, I guess I'm shaky as to why 42 is there, 41 has been, and I'm using the numbers, but the language of these articles, the language in Article 41 is one that we've seen historically.
Yes.
So next year, if the language in Article 42, and we get a new bylaw in place, would that make such that the language of Article 41 wouldn't be necessary? Am I interpreting that correctly?
I believe that is the case, but I would, I would want to confirm that with council. I believe that if Article 42 is adopted, it would no longer require Article 41, but I want to confirm that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry to get into the weeds on it, but it is, there's a lot of text here in Article 42, and I wasn't exactly sure what the necessity of it was, but when you explained that, it was related to the Municipal Modernization Act, it started to make sense.
Yeah, I mean, so you may recall, the Municipal Modernization Act was intended to do away with some of the arcane requirements that have been imposed on municipalities over the years, and the intent, I think, and certainly give credit to Governor Baker and his administration for pushing this, was to try to remove some of the unnecessary hurdles that local government faces. So it would make sense that if Article 42 is adopted as a bylaw, we would no longer have to pursue Article 41.
Thank you. Thank you.
All set? Okay. Anyone else have any questions at all? Are we good? As presented, everyone had this material in your packets and had ample opportunity to read them through, and everything is in line with how it's previously been written, the dollar amounts are the same. Obviously intuitively, you would know that the numbering has been restructured to incorporate the three additional articles, so for the public knowledge, you would be getting the mailing with all of the warrant articles sent to your property address anyway, so just make a mental note that the renumbering of the articles that are in line after those additions would now since be changed, but the content remains the same. Okay? We feel good here? Okay. Moving on to communications, please.
Under communications, the first item is a letter from me to Jane Lyman, who is the Director of Government Relations from Comcast. You may recall, a couple of meetings ago, there was an ascertainment hearing as part of the cable license renewal process. Every 10 years, the town is required to go through a renewal process, license renewal process with our cable provider. The document that is in your packet is fairly extensive, but it outlines a number of different issues that were brought forward during the ascertainment hearing. Talks about some of the important issues that the advisory committee believes need to be addressed in the license, namely capital improvements for WCTV, investment in their equipment, maintaining their operating budget for both public, government, and educational access, the three channels, the PEG channels. Also addressing the need to have broadcasting being done in high definition as opposed to analog, which is the current situation. There's a reference in here suggesting that a senior discount be granted for seniors who are taking the basic package of cable services. And there's also a reference to the importance of customer service and appropriate measurement of that. And then finally, the intent is to seek some dates with Comcast to begin the negotiations that will take some number of months now to reach a consensus on the terms of a new license, and the plan would be to bring that back to the Board of Selectmen for consideration. This existing license expires in February of 2018.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is a letter from me to the board, just trying to clarify what has been going on with the housing authority issue. You may recall, there's been some correspondence going back and forth between the Secretary of the Commonwealth and the town clerk, and also the Secretary of the Commonwealth and Housing and Community Development over appointment or election to fill vacancies on the housing authority. The town was, received notice back on February 15th that the town clerk should not include the vacant position on the housing authority for the upcoming election, because there was an attempt being made to modify the makeup of that board. Subsequent to that email on the 15th, town clerks and city clerks received a follow-up email on February 28th that, again, from the Secretary of the Commonwealth, permitted and required that elections to vacant seats go forward. I guess part of the issue that they identified after taking a closer look at this is that to allow vacancies to continue in some communities might make it problematic for them to continue to conduct business, because they would not have a quorum. So long and the short of it is, as a result of this most recent email, the vacancy that exists on the Wilmington Housing Authority is being posted, the position is up for election. The town clerk communicated with the one individual who had pulled papers to advise her that the election was, for that seat, was now back in sync, so to speak, so it appears we're ready to go on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is a memo from me to the board, just a quick update with regard to New England Trans Rail. I had a conversation with a representative from Senator Markey's office. She apprised me of the fact that she's been in touch with a representative from the Surface Transportation Board, which, as you know, is the board that oversees the review process of New England Trans Rail's efforts to get a permission to operate a transloading facility at the former Olin property. She indicated that, according to the rep from the STB, the letter from the legislative delegation did have an impact. They are mindful of the concerns that the delegation has raised, and although she's the representative from the STB, indicated that they are currently reviewing the information that came out of the communication from NET and ultimately our letters, she's not able to offer any kind of a deadline or a timeline as to when they will have a decision, but I guess the good news is that they consider the information from the congressional delegation to be important, and they will consider those issues that were raised. Next is a letter from me to Mayor Scott Galvin. Actually, I'm sorry, before we get to that one, the next one is a memo to the board from me regarding the facilities master plan. Just reminding the board that there is a meeting on March 16th at 6 o'clock here in Room 9 to continue to review the options that have been put forward with regard to the 20-year plan on our municipal facilities. So there are four options associated with the general government buildings, and six options that have been discussed now for a few months with regard to the school buildings. I would note that the school committee did take a vote on February 15th recommending so-called Option S6, which is that a pre-K to grade two, two schools would be set up in that fashion, one being at the Woburn Street, the other being at the Shawshine School, and then they are, the... And then, they are, the plan would call for renovating the North and the West Intermediate Schools and creating grades three to five in those schools, mothballing the Boutwell and the Wildwood School. So, this is still in a discussion stage, but it's the School Committee's belief that that option seems to be the best on the, on the school side. I would note that Valerie Gingrich is, she's had a conversation with, met with individuals over at the Senior Center last week to further engage people and get their opinions. She also has some sessions set up for the library, March 14th and the 28th. And again, we'll be meeting on the 16th to discuss these options with the idea of trying to further reduce the options and ultimately have the Facilities Master Plan Committee make a recommendation as a, as a preferred option for both the general government school and the school buildings.
Thank you.
Next is a letter from me to Mayor Galvin. This is with regard to the New Boston Street Bridge. I'll just read this into the record. As you know, at their February 13th, 2017 meeting, members of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen received a presentation from John Corey, City Engineer, and Robert Penfield, PE, DBIA, Director of Structural Engineering, VHB, for the New Boston Street Bridge project. A majority of the Board of Selectmen were satisfied with the presentation and are supportive of the project contingent upon the city's support of a truck exclusion on a portion of Woburn Street in Wilmington and subject to the update, updated traffic counts, which will be taken on the impacted roadways. Selectman Michael McCoy has requested that I inquire as to whether the city of Woburn has considered any alternative overpass locations to the re-establishment of the New Boston Street Bridge. He remains concerned about the impact of additional traffic traveling from Woburn Street, from Woburn to Woburn Street and other streets in Wilmington, and additionally, traffic traveling from Wilmington Streets to access the New Boston Street Bridge. If there's been other locations along the Boston and Main rail corridor in North Woburn that would provide access to the Anderson Regional Transportation Center and fulfill the city's other objectives, we would be interested in learning about those alternatives and the reasons for not pursuing them. Your assistance is greatly appreciated. Then we have a couple of letters responding to inquiries that were made on behalf of the board. This is from, this first one is from Rebecca Murray, who is the Supervisor of Records from the Secretary of the Commonwealth, with regard to the inquiry that was made about the executive session minutes for the School Committee back on October 3rd. And she's writing to indicate that a staff representative was assigned to review the matter and that we would be advised in writing of the disposition of the case. And then the second piece of correspondence also comes from Rebecca Murray, Supervisor of Records. This is directed to Joanne Benton. In the relevant section, just notes, "The nature of Mr. Hull's request and the content of the provided responses raises issues that invoke the open meeting law. Given that an interpretation of the open meeting law falls within the authority of the Office of the Attorney General and not this office, I decline to provide a determination as to the status of the executive session minutes." CGL Chapter 38, Section 23. It is recommended that you contact the AGO should you seek a determination on this issue." And I believe that is it under correspondence.
Okay. So, at this time, we'd move right into the Board to Consider items, please.
Under Board to Consider, the first item is the execution of the deed for the Butters Farm property located at 165 Chestnut Street, Map 15, Parcel 13. You'll recall, this was part of the presentation that was made by Valerie Gingrich.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion to consider executing the deed for Butters Farm property located at 165 Chestnut Street, Map 15, Parcel 13, please.
So moved it. So moved, as you described, Madam Chair.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Next under Board to Consider is executing the Preservation Restriction Agreement. This is the agreement between the town and Historic New England, as, again, part of the three agreements that the board would be asked to consider on the Butters Row, Butters Farm property.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion to execute the Preservation Restriction Agreement regarding Butters Farm? Questions, comments, or a motion, please?
No more.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Madam Chair, due to the number of signatures that are required on those documents, I have those in my office, and would ask that the board, immediately following this meeting, just execute those documents.
Sure. Thank you.
Next is a Board to Consider, the signing of the Stewardship Agreement with Historic New England. This agreement, you'll recall, as was mentioned by Valerie Gingrich, grants Historic New England the authority to oversee the property and ensure that the restrictions that are authorized in this agreement will continue to be complied with.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to sign the steward agreement with Historic New England as presented by the manager and our Planning and Conservation Director, Valerie Gingrich. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we sign the stewardship agreement with Historic New England.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Next under Board to Consider is the closing and signing of the warrant for the annual town meeting that is coming up on April 29th.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion for the closing and the signing of the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Show more.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
If I may, just one brief comment. I think, I want to make sure that we're conveying the right message here. We're just closing the warrant such that, I guess I'm saying this to the public, there'll be ample opportunity to have discussion and deliberation and conversation about every one of the articles at our, at the joint meeting on, what's that date?
21st of March.
On the 21st of March. So, I don't want folks to think that this is the last time we'll hear about these articles until town meeting. They will indeed come up in great detail at that, at that joint hearing and, as well again, on town meeting. So, thank you.
Correct. Okay. So, we have a motion. We do have a second. We had discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
And again, Madam Chair, there are three copies of the warrant. My suggestion is that the board sign those immediately following the meeting.
Okay.
This is the last copy.
Okay. So, moving on to the others.
Next is Board to Consider, Accepting an Easement for Philip Fontana for Four Lynch Lane. There's a memo from Paul Looney, and he writes as follows, "Please find an enclosed drainage agreement between Philip and Joanna Fontana, the grantor and owner of Four Lynch Lane and the town of Wilmington, the grantee for the review and signature. An existing municipal drain line currently traverses the aforementioned parcel. The drain line collects runoff from Lynch Lane and discharges to a wetland system behind the parcel. The owner is willing to grant the town this exclusive, permanent easement for $1 to operate and maintain this section of the town's drainage infrastructure." So, this is something that's been in existence for some period of time, and for whatever reason, there was no formal easement granted. The homeowner, I guess, is in the process of selling the home and, to his credit, contacted the Public Works Department and indicated that he would be willing to enter into a formal easement agreement so that the town would have access to maintain this drainage easement going forward.
Okay. Yes.
Madam Chair, if I may, just a quick question. Jeff, I think it's worth asking. There's no possibility of any negative impact on any residents in that area, but I see this as potentially a positive. Is that correct?
That's right. There's, it basically provides legal access for the town to go in there to the extent that is necessary periodically and just make sure the drainage easement is performing the way it should be.
But there's been no negative feedback from any of that?
Not that I know of. No.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion to accept the easement as presented for Philip Fontana with the town for Four Lynch Lane?
Make a motion.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Next is the Board to Consider Signing the Agreement for Wilmington Farmer's Market. You may recall, the board approved of the dates for the farmer's market at your previous meeting. This simply is the agreement or the lease, the license that is signed by the board each year to authorize them to conduct their farmer's market on the Swain property the next several Sundays.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to sign the license agreement for the Wilmington Farmer's Market.
I would move to approve and sign the license warrant.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
That was brought up at the last meeting in regards to the July 4th weekend.
Yes.
I don't see that in here, but is that something that you would be discussing with the group, other groups?
Yes. They would be advised that barring any arrangement that they had with the July 4th committee, they would not be able to conduct business on that Sunday.
That doesn't need to be put into this contract?
No. I think it can be just served through the, any correspondence, just confirming that that is the understanding.
If I may, forgive me. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff. That has been fairly common practice. They've, what, eight years now, nine years running? There has, I think, just about every year, been a circumstance where, because of other events that go on at the, at the site, that the farmer's market has always been amenable to changing their plans if the town was in need of that property, even without it being sort of written formally into this document. Correct?
Yes. I mean, they certainly are well aware of the July 4th program being particularly this last year on the Common, and last year were very much willing to accommodate, and my understanding is that's the case this year.
Yeah. They've always been very accommodating and amenable to that, recognizing, I'm sure, that it's a two-way beneficial kind of scenario. So, thank you.
Okay. So, we've had a motion, a second. Discussion, any further discussion?
I'll move to, to grant the license agreement for the Wilmington Farmer's Market.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded, okay. All set and discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous?
The next item is, under Board to Consider, is a request that the Wilmington Town Common be illuminated in blue during the month of April in observation of Autism Awareness Month. As you know, we've received these types of requests periodically for the last several years now. There is a slight cost, about $115, to purchase the gel that is inserted in these, in the lights on the Common, and this donation is being made anonymously to pay for the cost associated.
Move to grant the request.
Oops. Sorry about that. Okay. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just, my only discussion is that we ought to, well, just, thank you, to whoever the anonymous donor is for the, for the cost of those gels. Certainly, the town appreciates it.
Absolutely. Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Moving on to public comments. Yes, if you can please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Kevin McDonald. I have a few comments.
Just your address as well, please.
Underneath.
Your property address, please.
148 Ellis Street.
Okay.
I have a few comments. It's always been my understanding that the Board of Selectmen is a review board, but also an oversight board, and recently, somebody mentioned something to me that was very concerning. Her husband was a veteran, and they stopped getting veterans benefits. And I was told that, you know, they couldn't even afford to fix their car. And it seems to me that there should be some type of audit on the Veterans Department. And I was hoping that maybe this board can look into that. Concerning the agenda for this evening, with regard to the Trans Rail project, as you know, the town of Wilmington, it's been reported that it has a high cancer rate. Five wells were shut down in town due to a cancer-causing compound which was emanating from the Olin site. So, what I'm proposing to this board is that there be some type of legal action taken with regard to the fact that people have gotten cancer and died in town. And this facility should be looked at from that point of view, and this project should be stopped to investigate further concerns that could be causing cancer, not only in this town, but in downstream communities, because what I believe is happening is, because the wells were shut down, the water's not being pumped, and as a result, the water table is rising. The cancer-causing compound, if it's still flowing into that area, would be obviously flowing into downstream communities' water sources as well. And so, I think it might be prudent as a strategy to stop this project, to contact the town's legal representatives and have them consider this as a strategy to stop this project so that the town can evaluate what they're going to do to compensate the people in town that have gotten the cancer, and to see if we can attach this property in a lawsuit to help these people. The other concern I have is that you, you closed the warrant already, and a couple things that I don't see on the warrant, I don't see anything relative to affordable, low-income elderly housing proposals for the community on the town meeting. And I don't see any type of proposals for bringing a sewer line over to Andover Street. As you know, our Browns Crossing water wells are being fed from that direction up on Andover Street, and we now have an over 55 Andover Street, and we now have an over 55 community being proposed there, we also have another 60 acres that's undeveloped, and it seems to me that loading the soil over there with septic seems like it could be detrimental to our water supply, and I would hope that this board might reconsider closing the warrant to see if there's some type of proposal that could be put in place to extend the sewer line over there so that we're not negatively impacting our water supply. So, those are my concerns and my comments, and I hope the board will reconsider them.
Okay, so thank you very much, those have been noted, I just want to say, relative to Veteran Services specifically, I don't know the nature of what you're specifically speaking about, assuming privacy would be an issue here, and so I'm not going to ask any probing questions, but what I will say is just my personal opinion, having sat on this board, I'm all too complimentary of the work that's been done by Veteran Services, specifically Lou Samaglia and Joe Downs, I have every confidence that if this particular family were to engage with his office and have a one-on-one conversation, that they would be more than willing to hear this person or families matter and do anything they can to help out this family and any other family in Wilmington, I think that the Veteran Services Department has gone above and beyond, not just for Wilmington residents but for all veterans in this state and beyond, so I have every confidence that any issues would be addressed, but that's just my personal opinion. Regarding an Olin, I don't know that I could succinctly give you an update over the last year of the myriad of different public meetings, hearings, whether it's at the Board of Selectmen level or even public forums regarding, you know, DEP and EPA and all of that, and Mr. De Lorenzo, and the list goes on, we've had requests to do monitoring wells on the Olin site to be able to understand the magnitude of the contamination, which this board took action on, I certainly would defer to the town manager to give you a succinct timeline, not necessarily this evening, but any of those records of those meetings and minutes are available. Respectfully stated, I have not seen you present at a lot of meetings, and that's not a criticism to you, it's just more a statement of fact that this topic has been brought up on a number of occasions, we've had residents in from that area to have discussions with us, this board has spent a significant amount of time taking a stance on this particular project, as has the town manager, and there's no question that we as a town still have a lot of work to do, your comments are understood, there definitely is an issue there, no one is denying that, we have concern about cancer-causing agents there and a myriad of other factors, so that point is certainly understood. Elderly housing, you know, I'm not going to get into the specifics of that other than to say that the facility's master plan, if you've had an opportunity to read up on that or read up on any of those meetings, elderly housing and affordable housing and a diverse housing stock is all over the discussions relative to that, and I think the town is trying to let this plan be derived so that they can take a planning approach as to what makes sense, one, five, 10, 15, 20 years for Wilmington, and not prematurely spend sizable dollars to take on this, that was appropriated at the last town meeting for our facility's master plan, and it was modified, if you recall, on the town meeting floor to include the senior housing component, and I would just say to you and to anyone else regarding any project, whether it's senior housing, affordable housing, in the municipal realm, things don't happen at the rate of speed that we might want at the consumer level, and it takes time to go through this process and have public forums and give the public an opportunity to speak, and I think when the manager, oh, I know, when the manager speaks about important dates, he's going to be reiterating the March 16th date, which is a public forum for people to come out and talk about the facility's master plan, which has an elderly housing component to it, so, speaking relative to that, I don't think the town is ready, you know, to put on any specific warrant on, you know, articles on the warrant specific to elderly housing at this time. Regarding a sewer line for Andover Street, I'm going to defer to DPW as to what they think the future over there should look like, and I'm not prepared to give you a response regarding that.
Have you ordered an audit for the Veterans Department, or have you reviewed any itemized expenditures and output of money?
Me personally, no, but I can tell you that we sign Treasury warrants on a regular basis that go through the accounting office and go through the town manager's office and go before the Board of Selectmen to have signatures, so I have every confidence that this town is doing things appropriately, and obviously at the end of each year, the town goes through an audit process, so I have no reason to run an audit, that's not my role.
You're the chairperson of the Board of Selectmen, I would think that you would take a leadership role and recognize that the board is an oversight committee, and if there is a problem, you should have it identified. You should be able to look at all the expenditures, it should be itemized, you have the trust of the town, and you can look at people, the general public are not privileged to that type of confidential information, but I would think that you as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen should be able to identify and look at all the people that are getting funding and match it up to the funds that are coming from the federal government to the state and what gets sent to the town from the state.
With all due respect, Mr. McDonald, I am doing that, correct, and I'm going to interrupt you right now, and I'm going to kindly ask you, first of all, in terms of your comments relative to taking a leadership role, we all have access to that information and the names are written, and it is confidential information, and quite frankly, I'm not at liberty to convey names and addresses and people that are receiving benefits.
I don't want that.
But in terms of-
I just want an oversight.
You're indicating, you're indicating that there's a problem, okay, to which you have not, and I don't think this is the appropriate forum to necessarily have this conversation back and forth, I'm not privy to the specifics of the issue, what I have indicated to you is that I have every faith if that said party were to go into the Veterans' Office and to identify their circumstances and have a dialogue with the Veterans' Office, that they would explain in great detail, because it's a labor of love for the people that are in that department, by the way, this is not just, you know, an ad hoc exercise. Correct, and I have every confidence that they're doing their job and doing it quite well.
You just, I just asked you a question, if you-
I answered your question, and you're not satisfied with the answer.
You're walking by faith, and you-
I'm not walking by faith, I've walked into that office many times and I've watched the delivery of Veteran Services and benefits done very well with a lot of love, patience, and care for people that deserve those benefits. You, sir, have a personal axe to grind with that department because you don't like the leader of that department, that's what the root cause is, you have given no material facts and no proof that there's an issue there, and so quite frankly, I don't take it upon myself to do random audits when I don't see or feel that there is a problem. Yes, I do oversee the Treasury warrants on a weekly basis, as do all of my colleagues to my left and to my right, and everything is being done appropriately in the Veterans' Office, through the accounting office, and with the town manager, I'm fine with how things are going, and I don't foresee that there's a problem. If there's an issue, by all means, direct that party to veterans, and if something needs to be done, I have every faith that it will be done appropriately.
Just the last thing I wanted to comment on, you were on the Yentile Farm Committee, and it was brought to my attention that 14,000 cubic yards of farm loom was given away for free to Roberto Loom, and we have a recycling yard less than a mile down the street, and it seems to me that that quantity of choice farm loom was probably worth a quarter of a million dollars, and to hear that that was given away for free, I just, I'm perplexed how that could happen.
So, is that, is that just a statement of fact on your part, is that just your opinion, or is that a question?
Well, I was told by the superintendent of the company that was building the Yentile Farm that 14,000 cubic yards of farm loom was given away for free to Roberto Loom, and you being the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and on that committee that was supposed to be overseeing the Yentile Farm and protecting our financial interests, it's concerning to me that you let that happen.
I did let that happen, yes I did, for a justifiable reason, and I would certainly defer to the town manager, but my understanding of it, and we had ample discussion on it, is it would cost more for the cost of loading those trucks and transporting them, plus the value of the loom, that it would be a loss leader for this particular project to have handled it any other way, that it would have been detrimental to the project to not handle it the way that we did because it would have delayed and it would have cost more money to have handled it, that was the most cost-effective solution, and people that have training and far more skill than you, sir, and myself advised me and the committee that that was the proper way to handle it.
Well, the town has its own excavation equipment, it has its own trucks, and for a company to come all the way from Billerica, all the way to Wilmington, to pick up the loom and to truck it back there, has to, has to just rattle, rattle a common person's common sense saying, if they can do it, if it's worth them sending all their trucks over there and paying the labor and the trucking to do that, and the town has a recycling yard right down the street, why would it, how on this planet could it not be worth it for the town to use its own equipment to truck a quarter of a million dollars' worth of loom to its site, rather than give it away for free?
I've given you ample opportunity to have your speech, I will tell you that the financial metrics, which you don't have, didn't make sense to do it that way, that's the reason why, and as far as my leadership and the finances, I take no personal credit for the success of that project, but it has been an overwhelming success, and at the town meeting, we will be announcing the final financial picture, and I'll be very pleased to report that the project is significantly under budget, and everything about that project has gone exceptionally well, and that is because of people like our town engineer, Paula Looney, who have been there day in and day out as our project manager, working with the people that have been hired by the town and has done an amazing job, his attention to detail, his professionalism, his ability to get that job done on time and under budget, he's one person of a greater team, but he deserves a significant amount of credit, and I, sir, will take his opinion seven days a week, anytime, because he is simply outstanding, and the town of Wilmington is very lucky to have him, that's my statement on that.
Let me just say that it's very easy for something to commit under budget when it's way over budget.
No, I think actually you're done, I've given you 10 minutes, I've given you 10 minutes worth of time.
If you overinflate a price, it's very easy to commit under budget.
You have the right to your opinion, but you don't have the right to your facts, you're misinformed, yet again, again, yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, no, I can honestly say, every point that you said is accurate, and I say that with all sincerity, everything you said is 100% accurate, and I do support everything you said, the only, one thing I'm going to make a comment, when you talk about Veteran Services, Kevin, Lou does a great job, I hear nothing but wonderful things about Lou.
Have you audited them? Have you reviewed all their expenditures?
I am talking to you on what I see as him as a, as a department head, I hear nothing but wonderful things, I mean, he helps hundreds and hundreds of people in this community, and he also helps people outside the community, and that means a lot, that's all I'm going to say about that, he does a great job, and I think Lou's a fantastic guy, great man. I heard what you said, but-
A veteran's family was denied benefits in Wilmington.
Mr. McDonald, I'm going to rule your comments out of order, you've been given ample opportunity to speak.
You haven't reviewed anything.
Once again, we've indicated-
You look good, you look good, you put in the flagpole on the front page of the town file, but you don't review the dollars and cents.
Mr. McDonald, I'm going to rule your comments out of order, please bring your comments to a close, you're done for this evening.
It puts a lot of wonderful smiles on a lot of people's faces and a lot of families, Kevin.
In short, somebody's being denied benefits, they can't afford to fix their car, a couple of smiles.
I don't know anything about that.
Mr. McDonald, please refrain from speaking, anyone else for public comments? Hearing none, okay. Moving on to items not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance, anything further here, Mr. Hall?
No, I would just comment that it's unfortunate that people are able to take shots at professionals that have been in the business for a long time and serve people very well, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Without that, I'll be happy to receive the complete audit of that department.
Once again, please refrain from speaking, you're done for this evening, thank you. Okay, moving on to new business and committee reports, I'll start with you, Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, maybe on a little bit happier note, when we were talking about immigration, when that was all said, I shared a moment with Mr. Shampoo, and I said, hey, my grandfather came over on the boat from Sicily, so he smiled, gave me a little pat on the shoulder, and I'm sure Mr. Kyra could probably elaborate a little bit more about our upbringings and our roots from the old country, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, I think they were properly documented, but my parents came down on a train from Canada, so, yeah, that was, we all come from somewhere, don't we? I just wanted to report to you, my colleagues, that last Friday I had opportunity to go to a legislative breakfast in Chestnut Hill, I know what you're thinking, really? It was supposed to be in Ipswich a few weeks ago, but I couldn't go to that one, so I did, I did want to attend, so I did go, just a couple of brief sort of summary notes that I took from it, Governor Baker continues to honor his campaign pledge to support unrestricted government aid at the same rate as revenue growth in the state, so he's looking to a 3.9% increase in government aid, which translates to, I forget how many million, but that was, I thought positive commentary coming out of Mass Municipal Association about unrestricted government aid to cities and towns, let's see, I'm just going to go very brief, a lot of the discussion, I will admit to you, focused on how cities and towns will deal with the recreational marijuana law, and I know that, a moratorium on that to allow us to formulate our own local zoning with regards to that is on our town meeting warrant, but there are a number of bills and discussion topics happening at the State House with regards to that, so, it is, the MMA is arguing and lobbying quite aggressively at the State House for enhanced clarity in the law as it relates to how cities and towns will regulate that, ideally, you know, at this point, it's not to thwart the will of the people, but rather to regulate the law that's put in place, and ultimately to collect taxes and use that revenue appropriately. And lastly, 200 million in Chapter 90, which is streets and road repair, 200 million will be divvied out to the, to the state, that number is, the letters are due out on April 1st, so you should see that soon, Jeff, and that will give Jeff and Mike Woods and others the, an understanding of what kind of revenue will be available to Wilmington for the construction of, or for the repair and construction of roads going into fiscal 18, so, 200 million is a million, 100 million shy of what the MMA is asking for, but it's a pledge that is made from Governor Baker and both the House and Senate, so, it's money you can count on, so I thought those were positive comments coming from the State House and coming from MMA that I got last week, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for that report, over here to my right, Mr. Kyra, please.
I'm good, other than, just to agree with your comments that you made to Mr. McDonald in regards also to Yentile Farm, they could not have had a better committee and advisory staff than what this group had, they were hardworking, they looked at every single aspect of it, including the soil issue, I actually brought that issue up, and it was explained concisely as to what, what, the use of that soil, that it wasn't really, it was in excess, it wasn't, it wasn't the type of soil that, that could be sold and brought more funding into the town, we went over it and we talked about it, we took the advice of, of the department heads, and, and I would agree with what was done, that whole project is probably one of the best things that, that has happened to this town in a long time, other than, of course, for the school and the high school and the, and some of the other building projects that were done in Wilmington.
Mr. Kyra?
I'm going to rule your comments out of order, you are done for the night, as I've indicated, and you have been warned for the last time, I'm going to ask you to kindly withdraw from the meeting, please withdraw from the meeting. Please withdraw from the meeting.
If all of us are representative of meeting for the best interest of the people, I'd have to disagree with that.
Chief Begonis, can I kindly ask that you escort this gentleman to the parking lot? Thank you.
Thank you, I have two events I'd like to plug if I could, I'd like to ask residents to join me, there's two great events coming up, one is this Saturday, it's an event put on the last couple of years by our outstanding Veteran Services Department, which I can't say enough about, and I agree with my colleagues, I think we have two of the finest gentlemen in the Commonwealth, serving our community, they've served our country admirally, and now they're serving our community on a day-to-day basis, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and they're putting on the 10th anniversary breakfast for one of Wilmington's finest heroes, our, our own PFC, John F. Landry Jr., breakfast, it's been 10-year anniversary, that's this Saturday at the Knights- That's this Saturday at the Knights of Columbus at 9:00 AM. It's a free event, and I hope residents will join us there to honor one of our finest heroes. And then secondly, this Thursday, again, this board has put in a tremendous amount of work in my short time here, and even before that, trying to fight against this New England Transrail. I'll be at the library on Wilmington, Wilmington Library on Thursday from 4:30 to 6:30, meeting with Representative from Congress in Moulton's office, who are going to be there for his office hours, and I'll be there to be sure to voice my opposition for the New England Transrail project. And again, I don't think I have yet to meet a Wilmington resident that's in favor of this project, so I hope others will join me, and so we can push back as best we can. I know we've done a number of other things, as it was incorrectly stated earlier, we have done quite a few things, and I'm proud of that. So this is just another step. And then lastly, I'd be remiss if I just didn't mention, it's been well documented over the last week or so, that one of my colleagues has decided not to run, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank her for her service for, for more than a decade of service to this town, on the school committee and on this board. And I know we'll have a couple of other meetings here to celebrate you, whether you like it or not, and, but I just want to thank you for being a terrific role model to a young member of this board. You've been very helpful anytime I've had a question and try to figure out the right thing to do for residents, because that's all you know. You've spent your entire life working on behalf of Wilmington, you've been transparent, you've been accessible to residents, and you've always been fair. We haven't always agreed on everything, but I can't thank you enough, and I know that you will sorely be missed by this board, and I wish you well. I know it's not been an easy decision for you, but I didn't want to go without saying thank you publicly for all that you've done for Wilmington for a very long time.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, I didn't intend to have anything to say, but I just wanted to say to you, Slakman-Bendel, thank you very much for saying that. Obviously, I had made this decision and had announced it not just this last week, but previously in the month of February, and I chose to release it through Robert Hayes, through the Wilmington Apple, and also spoke with Corey Tuit, and I had indicated before the Christmas holiday that I would be making the decision in the January, February timeframe, and I did follow up with that. I know the town crier has reached out to me as well and have been informed that in the middle of February. I did, in fact, make that announcement. I had, it had been out via Twitter, it's been on Facebook. I had an opportunity to sit down with Jeff prior to releasing anything to the media to give him a courtesy notification that I would not be running, and it's been a very difficult decision for me to make. I have personal reasons which are positive, and everything will be fine, and professional reasons as to why I've chosen not to run, and certainly will have an opportunity during my last meeting to give some very sincere thanks to a lot of people that have been very influential in my life on, on a myriad of different levels. But I, I can't express to you, Slakman-Bendel, what your comments mean. It's, it's not been an easy decision, and, you know, unfortunately, anytime you make decisions in public roles, you receive criticism, whether it's accurate or not accurate, positive or negative, it kind of goes with the territory. But I just want to let you and everyone else know that I remain in love with this town as I have been born and raised here and have multiple generations of my family, and this will always be my home, and I have never taken this seat for granted, and it's been a tremendous honor to have the opportunity to serve the residents of Wilmington, and I will certainly miss being here, but I know that there are several capable people that will bring this town forward into the future, and it will continue to be a magnificent place to live, work, and raise a family. So I just wanted to thank you very, very much for those kind words. So moving on to important dates. Thank you.
Important dates, we have, March 16th is the registration deadline for rookie, rookies T-ball. Also, March 16th is a Behavioral Health Provider Fair, Finding Balance for Our Kids, Wilmington Middle School, 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Same night, February 16th, is the Facilities Master Plan Committee meeting here in Room 9 at 6:00 PM. As was mentioned earlier, March 18th is PFC John F. Landry Jr. 10-year anniversary breakfast, Wilmington Knights of Columbus, 9:00 AM. March 21st is the Finance Committee and Planning Board Joint Public Hearing relative to the warrant for the annual town meeting at the Town Hall Auditorium, 7:00 PM. March 27th is the Board of Selectmen next meeting here in Room 9 at 7:00 PM. April 1st, Rabies Clinic Public Buildings Department, noon to 2:00 PM. April 3rd is the last day to register to vote at the annual town elections and town meeting. Town Clerk's office is open 8:30 AM to 8:00 PM. April 10th is another Selectmen's meeting here in Room 9, 7:00 PM. April 15th is the Easter Egg Hunt at the Town Common, 2:00 PM. And I would just, if I could, Madam Chair, just to add a couple of items. One is, given the pending snowstorm that we're all, I'm sure, aware of at this point, town offices will be closed tomorrow with the exception certainly of the Public Safety Building, they'll continue to be open. Obviously, Public Works will be out moving snow, and our public, public buildings crew, the custodial building maintenance folks will be here trying to keep buildings clear. I would also note that the trash and recycling collection, which normally would take place tomorrow, will not take place, it's going to be deferred a day, so every, everything at this point will be backed up a day. So the Tuesday delivery will take place on Wednesday, Wednesday delivery Thursday, and so on.
Okay. Anything further? All set? Okay. This time I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Yes. Okay, thank you, and good night.